Madam Clerk.
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act NJSA 10:4-6 at SEC, notice of which was sent to the record and the Star Ledger and was posted on the municipal bulletin board.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Here.
Councilmember Sims?
Here.
Councilmember Greenman?
Here.
Mayor LaBrus.
Here. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, into the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in the liberty and justice for all. Okay. Approval of the minutes, please. I have a motion for September, special meeting, September 29, 2014. Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call.
Okay, on this one, Councilwoman Greenman, you were absent on that day. Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
I was absent.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. And now for the COW meeting and a regular meeting on October 7, 2014. May I have a motion, please?
Everybody was here for that one.
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. City managers' report.
Certainly, the first item is the bond anticipation note sale. Jim Meng and our CFO, I see him in the audience. We had a very successful sale on November 13. We have a winning bid of Valley National Bank with a net interest cost of $39,514.93, or a half of a percent. This is an excellent rate. It's better than the .54 percent that we had received in the April sale. So, our financial outlook may be inching a little bit forward.
Good.
Item number two. People will notice that at the doorways and at different locations at City Hall, there are little maps in black frames. We have gone through a very detailed response to fire drills and to exit the building in case of an emergency. All the staff has been trained and you, we may have a surprise fire drill one council meeting to see how we all react. We have had one for staff and it worked out very well and very pleased to announce that. We will now be going to several other buildings owned by the municipality where there are, where the public is and continue that process. Item number three, there is a box downstairs in the atrium. It's for Josephine's Garden at Hackensack University Medical Center. It's accepting donations for children with cancer. The donations of gifts which are listed on the bulletin board there will be accepted through January 16. We've already filled up one box, hope to fill up a few more between now and then. Item number four, soil sampling. This is a New Jersey Energy Strong project being conducted by PSE&amp;G. There's going to be sampling at least in 10 locations, starting within the next week or two, and it has to do with a cut in the road with a three-inch-wide cut and a five-foot deep to do soil sampling and to check on the gas utility. They will be upgrading the gas utility next year in certain locations in the town as part of the Sandy, addressing the Sandy storm of several years ago. The drainage improvement on Summit Avenue. The county has received bids that will be awarded and will be moving forward, which this has been talked about at quite a length of time at the council meetings. And last but not least, the Hackensack Cultural Arts Center does have a show going on called The Rugrats, Rugrats Live. Check the website for dates, times, or call the Cultural Arts Center for more details. Mayor, that ends my report.
Okay, real quick on the Summit Avenue flooding. Obviously, they're going at the bid. It's going to be a while longer. We are hitting the colder nights. We're getting freezing already. Matter of fact, there was ice there the other night. We need to either do something with the county or with our DPW or some type of coordination to make sure that area gets salted because it-
Yes, we are-
-does infringe eight feet out into the roadway and it's an accident waiting to happen.
The bids were due to, due to the county today at 4:00.
Mm-hmm.
So, we're hoping they move fast, award it and-
Well, I'd like to see because of the, I think it's a safety issue, whether they can do an emergency on that.
I will check, I'll check with the county.
Thank you. That's it?
That's it.
Okay, Madam Clerk, Resolution 453-14.
Is resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 44-2014, an ordinance amending Part 1 of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code entitled Administration Legislation to Add Chapter 10 Entitled Rules of Order. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
May I have a motion open to the public, please?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Anybody who'd like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come to the microphone, give your name and address to the clerk, please. You have five minutes.
Five minutes is at the end of the meeting after you pass your resolution.
Oh, you're right. I'm sorry, you're right.
It's a- I'll try to keep it within five minutes.
You're 100% right, Rick. My mistake. How are you?
100% right. You hear that? I'm good. How are you doing?
Good.
Listen, how many attorneys, how many councils did it take to do the newsstand ordinance to get it right? That one was a celeb. That was an adventure, right? But you, you got it to the point where everyone was comfortable with it, you did it right. It caused you to, along the way, and maybe the prior council to table it. I think you really need to consider tabling this ordinance tonight. The record doesn't always get it right in their editorials. And there were some things in their editorials, this editorial pertaining to this issue, which were wrong. The ordinance doesn't say that you're going to designate someone from a group, says you're going to ask. And that's common. We've seen that over the years when a large group comes in. Can you appoint a spokesperson? So, or the, and I've also seen the, do it through the chair. If you want to go that route, that's fine, and I think people can live with it. But I think the council, all of you, need to get a perspective, an historical perspective. There's been many councils before you, there will be many councils after you. I never thought I'd get to use Pink Floyd in a presentation to you, but all in all, you're just another brick in the wall. This ordinance, you're designating your official newspapers. It doesn't belong in there. You're usurping the function. On July 1, 2017, maybe you'll be reelected, but you'll still be a new council, or someone else will be there. It's going to take them a month to reorganize the way they're supposed to. That in and of itself should cause you to pull back, table, do it right. Because with the resolution you're passing later on, you're establishing your order. You really are. And that's what, at least I have been asking you to do for some time. The ordinance, with all due respect to the city attorney and his office, is a lot of cut and paste. It's a regurgitation of the Byron Bear Open Public Meeting Act and the Council Manager Form of Government. You don't need a definition of what a meeting is in a city ordinance. We know what it is and what the state says it is, is binding on us. These standards for what is not permitted, John, are totally unenforceable. What is defamatory? I mean no disrespect, I really don't. You're not an attorney, you don't deal in terms of defamation, slander, libel. How are you going to make that kind of call on something that's stated? You can't. That's where the record has it right. Because in the combination of the time limits plus the criminal statute that says no one can physically disrupt a meeting, you've got, you'll reestablish or establish your control over these meetings, in my opinion. And you embraced that passage from Justice Brennan, Jersey guy. You said you used this, said you're, when you were sworn in. "When we consider this case against the background of profound national commitment to the principle that debate on public issues should be uninhibited, robust, and wide open, and it may well include vehement, caustic, and sometimes unpleasantly sharp attacks on government and public officials." That's what America's all about. I believe you agree with me, John. You've stated it a number of times.
It wasn't Brennan, I believe it was Douglas. It was a different one, but it was similar to that.
Well, it was Brennan's opinion and they cited, and he quoted Douglas's concurring opinion. But I want to give credit to the Jersey guys, you know, we need some home cooking occasionally. So, one other matter I just wanted, the, oh, the relevant to public business. You're overstepping your bounds because that's, that is defined under the Open Public Meeting Act, not you. And here's what it says. When you have, you do, you have to say, "You and boards of ed have to set aside a period of time for people to speak for public comment on governmental or school district issues that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the municipality or school district." So, it's not your determination, it's John Q. Public who gets up here. Let me just say this. I'm not overly concerned for myself because if I think you've violated my rights, I know what I can do. I'm more concerned about John Q. Public. And again, John, no disrespect, remember April? You misstated the law in terms of ordinances and politicking and public courts. And you are the mayor. People attach significance to that, what you say. And in this instance, I think you need to stay away from these terms because I don't think you can enforce them, I don't think you can interpret them. I'll give you an example, a very recent vintage, which is maybe not my proudest moment, but at one meeting, I was referring to a member of council by what I perceive to be her first name, and you let it go because I was just speaking my mind. Last or two meetings ago, within your absence, deputy mayor didn't like it and gavelled me down. It's all very subjective. That's what you need to stay away from. Please, please, table this. If you're going to do it by ordinance, do it right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree with Mr. Salkin. Please table this. There's too much in here that is very broad strokes. Like, I do not have to give my address. It says each person shall give his or her name and address. I do not have to give my address. That is not required. So, there are things and whom I'm representing and state the subject I wish to discuss. That's not required. There are many things in here that are subjective, as Mr. Salkin said, he stole my word. I mean, who determines what's defamatory? Ms. Greenman thought I was threatening her when I said my family loves me and she'll be held accountable. She even went and filed a police report about that, okay? Who determines what is threatening? Who determines? It's very, very subjective. And to put that in strictly prohibited, it, it goes beyond, beyond what is needed. Another thing, I don't know if you realize, it says, "Minutes of the meeting shall be read and approved at the beginning of the regular meeting." Is the city clerk going to have to sit there and read the minutes at the beginning of the meeting? Because that's what that says. There are several things in here that, the wording, disorderly conduct, that disturbs or disrupts the conduct of any meeting, that is another subjective. Like, if people are clapping after somebody speaks, that's subjective. If you don't like what the person said, then you can gavel them down. There's just too much in here that handcuffs the public and is not required, is not required at this meeting. And as I have said, I give all due respect. I have been disrespected and never got an apology, never got an explanation, never got anything. So, to expect me to respect this person who has disrespected me is beyond reason, okay? The rest of you, I give you your respect, but to say that I have to give my address, that in Teaneck, there was an activist who was murdered. Teaneck decided people do not have to give their addresses when they, when they stand up and speak, okay? I don't do that. I don't give my, I give my street, but it's not required. So, there are many, many things in here. I mean, you're handcuffing yourselves, too. I am asking that you table this because of the subjectiveness of what you're saying we should do and some of the things that you're requiring of yourself. It's overreaching, overly broad on, on a lot of aspects.
Thank you. Next, please.
Lynn Herwitz, Hackensack. It is not my intent to dissect the ordinance, but rather to speak to its apparent purpose to quell public debate. I believe that you reap what you sow. Your council set the tone that brings us to this proposed ordinance. Mrs. Canestrino, you set the tone when you spoke before the previous council on many occasions displayed an unpleasant temper, as did your own supporters at those meetings. Mrs. Greenman, you set the tone when you sent out vicious emails denigrating public officials. Mayor LaBrus, you and I have talked about this. If public meetings cannot be controlled, I believe this is a knee-jerk reaction by you and the council to public debate. Public discourse should always be civil. I believe in democracy and the freedom of speech. One of your campaign promises was to have open government, and part of your ordinance undermines everything that the First Amendment rights stand for. You cannot force to civility by strangling your critics. Who among you are able to decide what is or is not relevant to public business? Remember, it is you who set the tone. The rest of us respond to your ability to govern. I believe you should not pass this ordinance. I think it is way restrictive, and I don't know who wrote it, but if you did, Mr. Screevo, I think you erred. Thank you.
I have a question about, okay, E, small letter H. No person may address the council more than once during the public comment portion of the meeting. I've got a list of things, and if, for example, now I'm asking you about this, does that mean then that when something else comes up, I would not be able to ask a question about that? I'm not quite clear on this.
Mayor, if I could jump in on that?
Yes, please.
This is a public hearing, so anytime there's a public hearing under an ordinance, then everyone has an opportunity to speak. But in addition to that, the council meetings will always have a public comment portion of the meeting, which is dedicated for that purpose. So, the one-time up rule only applies to the public comment portion of the meeting.
I don't understand.
So, tonight, for example, this is a public hearing that you're speaking on this item. You also have the opportunity, of course, during the public comment section to come up, which is later on in the meeting, and speak again.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Joseph Beretto, Palmer Avenue. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's been a while. Good to see you. Just a quick comment on this. Is this being all brought about because of the past five or six months of just a lot of bickering, yelling, carrying on, name-calling? Is this what brought all this about?
You want me to answer you now, Joe, or when you're timed?
Yeah, I just-
It's, we're just trying to get some civility at our meetings. We, we've asked and we will continue to ask. This isn't to restrict anybody's freedom of speech. There's certain things that should not be tolerated at meetings as far as public discourse. I believe in public discourse or as a way to express yourself at these meetings, and it's important that we have that, but there also has to be some civility at the meetings. And that's what we're looking to get to here.
And I can agree with you on that. I mean, there have been times when I've been up here speaking and I've been saying the same thing from the people that were either behind me that didn't agree and were saying things, and those that did agree, even. But I, but I have to be honest with you. What I find just a bit hypocritical is, depending on what the topic was that was being discussed up here, it was allowed to go on if it was something that the majority of people were in agreement with. And then when it wasn't popular, then it was tried to be shut down. And that's kind of unsettling. I mean, we had, one evening when I had, there was a woman here who must have said the N-word maybe 15, 20 times, and she allowed, it was continued to go. And then there have been times when, you know, people were attacking Ms. Greenman, and that was allowed to go on, even when she was screaming for it to be stopped. So, what I'm saying is, you know, if we're trying to control or what's going on here, it has to also apply there because it hasn't been even. There should be civility. There should be, just because of, you earned the right to sit up there. You were elected. That comes with respect. The name-calling and everything else, it just, it's not right. It's not professional, it's not courteous, it's just wrong. You know, that's not the way things should be handled.
Agreed.
But I must tell you, if you think back, there have been many times where it's back and forth.
That's exactly-
And it allows to go on, and now it's almost like, okay, now we just got to really smother it. And, you know, it's a fine balance, and I think we need to look at it, if we can get the desired effect, which is civility and people to come up here, speak, ask questions without any criticisms, without mocking, without mumbling under someone's breath, you know? You can be on one side, you can be on the other, or right down the middle, whatever it is, but they still should be treated with respect.
I agree. One of the reasons this ordinance, that we're looking at this ordinance is for that reason. There's not one in place, and we need to have one in place. It's been pointed out by the public before, and this way we have guidelines to follow, we have rules, and rules for us, rules for the public. And that's what we're looking to obtain, is some civility at our meetings. We're not looking to squash anybody's freedom of speech, absolutely not. And you can come up here and say the same thing to me in a civil way that you could say in a disruptive way. We're looking to end disruptive behavior and the disruption of the meetings. That's basically what we're asking. And yes, I agree with Mr. Salkin. When he spoke about when I was elected the first time to council, I actually quoted somebody on, "The public has a right to yell and scream." But in that sense, if it's about an issue, yes, but if it's a personal attacks, I disagree with it. Personal attacks up here, there's no place for it.
And I agree with you on the personal, that bothers me, it's always bothered me. The thing is, in terms of just, there's a lot of language into the ordinance, and I think that's just something that if, maybe just needs to be fine-tuned or done over or checked again, just before anything's put in place, and then later we're going to have to go back and revisit it. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Hi, good evening, Kathleen Salvo. I'm going to direct my question through the mayor, as I'm supposed to, and it's to Mr. Screevo, our attorney. Why has this taken a year and a half to be put together? Why wasn't this put together right in the beginning, when the council was elected, so that we could have some kind of procedure to go by or to stand by? Why is it after the fact and not before? Or-
Mayor, would you like me to answer?
Well, yes, I don't know if you can answer that, because there was a draft of this for a while on our table.
Been drafted for, yeah, it's been drafted for some time, at least seven, eight months, I believe, since the council had asked me to prepare the draft. So, it's been out, it's been out there for quite some time.
And it's changed.
It has evolved, it has evolved. Council had provided, individually, the council members had provided input to me on what they wanted to see changed, and so it reflects a work in progress that has culminated in what is before the council this evening.
And it took that long to put together?
It wasn't a matter of it took him that long to put it together, it took the council that long.
But as I said last night, there's just certain criteria, certain variables that you could put, like the five limit, time limit, but there are certain legal things from freedom of speech that you can't do. So, Mr. Screevo should have been, as an attorney, directing you as to what you can do and couldn't do. And it took seven months to put this thing together?
The time limit, for instance, is done by resolution, it's not in the ordinance. It's done by resolution, that way it-
With the resolution, it took that, that long to put this together?
It took us this long before we finally, and a lot of it had to do with circumstance, not just, you know.
But I would assume that it would have been since Mr. Screevo wrote the book on municipality that it should have been done the first month you were in office to set the guidelines as to the five, I think you're allowed to, you're allowed to set the time on how long, the five minutes. But you can't, you can't critique what people say. I mean, it's freedom of speech. If they have an opinion and if it doesn't agree with your opinion, like when the, when the former council was here, anytime he said something and they didn't agree exactly what they wanted, they would call us political. And it was, I mean, we were entitled to think on our own, to have an opinion. So, it was, Josie used to always say, "Oh, it's political." If you didn't agree exactly what they all said, because nobody's allowed to disagree. So, we're allowed to disagree, we're allowed to have an opinion. And some of the opinions that are brought forth and you thought about, you changed your mind on it because that's what we're here to discuss, to identify the problem, to give our opinions, and then to make an intelligent decision on the problem. So, I don't think you can tell us what we can and can't say.
There is nothing in this ordinance that tells you what you can and can't say unless it's defamatory, unless it's disruptive to the meeting.
Right, and you can't, if we get-
Or obscene, or name-calling.
Excited about it, you can't say we can't, you know, we can't, we can't be disrespectful, but we could clap and we could show emotion and we could jump up it down.
The clapping thing is in there. If you read, read the ordinance, the clapping is only, I'll let the city attorney explain that a little better.
Sure, Mayor. Just as a general, you know, proposition here, the lack of rules of order by this city puts Hackensack in the distinct minority of all municipalities in this state, not only, and particularly cities of the size of Hackensack. So, not having rules of order like this puts Hackensack in the minority of municipalities. And so, you know, it's the exception, not the rule, where rules of orders don't exist. So, in most municipalities, in all other municipalities where I sit as the municipal attorney, there are rules of order that have been adopted, and of course, that's not only applies in municipalities in the state of New Jersey, but school boards, including the school board here in this, in this city, has, have rules of orders as well. So, it's the minority that, so this is just getting the city up to a position where it is with all other municipalities of similar ilk within the, within the state and across the country. As it relates to the clapping, it only uses that as an example in some of the prohibited conduct where it modifies the conduct of disorderly conduct. So, it is used by an example, stomping feet, things that are disorderly. And so, this ordinance will withstand constitutional scrutiny on a facial attack, and as one of the residents brought up previously, it will be up to enforcement. And these, this ordinance does not in any way limit anyone's speech in any way, shape, or form.
But clapping, like if somebody got an award, we're not allowed to clap?
No. If you look at it, just, if I could just, if you look at it, it's disorderly conduct, including stomping in the feet, things that you, that would be-
So, clapping for getting an award is okay?
Applause.
Clapping because you don't like what somebody said, you can't do it, or what somebody says, you can't. Because the half the room probably likes what somebody said and the other half doesn't like what somebody said.
That would be considered applause.
So, we can't, we can't discriminate on, clapping and applause are two different things?
They are.
Hello, that's all right, that's a very fine line. Okay, thank you.
Does, is there, are there any civil or criminal penalties in this ordinance?
Mayor, we don't have any such. This is just a-
Is there anything in this ordinance that departs from the practice that the council has followed from time immemorial?
From what I've read and to other, another towns, including Camden and several other cities in New Jersey, it's, they're very similar, very similar.
Yeah, I mean, I think the only people who could, who are disturbed by this are people who have already abused the parameters of public discourse. I don't see anything in here that threatens my freedom of speech, you know, in a civil society. So, I urge you to pass it.
Thank you.
How you doing, Mayor?
Good, sir. How are you?
I'm good. Hope your Thanksgiving was well, as well as everybody else.
Yours also.
Thank you. Jason Dunhamacher, Prospect Avenue. Mayor, let me, first, I went back, I did look at our own board policy.
Mm-hmm.
And I agree with you that the term abusive language is in there.
Right.
But somewhat ironically, we're, we're taking that out because we feel it was too overbroad and vague as to- overbroad and vague as to what could be considered abusive or not. And I'll, I'll just give you a, a couple of different examples as I was just sitting here, and I'm referring to 10-5B, specifically defamatory language or personal language. Just last meeting, John, and I'm sure you didn't mean it this way, but you said the Board of Education was holding the city hostage over the public channel, and you said the city was misled. Now, if I didn't know you like I did, I could take that to be a personal attack, I'm being quoted as a terrorist, taking something hostage. That's a defamatory comment. I don't think you meant it that way, and I'll, I'm gonna address this, the substance of your comment later, but for, but, Councilwoman Greenman called me a racist and a bigot. That, to me, that's defamatory. To me, that's personal. To me, that's abusive. To me, that's see-relevant to the public business. Nothing was done to stop her.
Agreed, agreed. And anybody from this day is who did, did that.
But nothing was, but nothing was done to stop her from saying it.
Correct. Well, I disagree. If any, if there's defamatory language coming from up here, it would be stopped in the future.
Mayor, go, go look at the meeting. You, you let it happen for a good five minutes. Let's just be fair, all right? Councilwoman, woman got up in October, as I, as I spoke, and she slammed the door to go back in the meeting because she didn't want to hear what I had to say. To me, that's disruptive. Nothing was done.
Hence this ordinance.
But, you know, and, and she probably has the right to call, I'm a public official, she probably has all the right in the world to call me a racist and a bigot. It's not true. I didn't take it personal because I know it's not true. And even I think the four of you are my horse's critics, you would not even call me that, because most of you know me well enough to know I'm not. You know, I've, I've gone up here, I, I called you, I've called each of you a hypocrite or sometimes incompetent on certain things. Is that a personal attack?
No.
Well, I don't know, to somebody else, it may be.
Go ahead.
Somebody else could, if I call somebody a hypocrite, or if I call someone incompetent, that could be a personal remark, that could be defamatory. Are you admitting you're a hypocrite, John? Or is that not defamatory? Which one is it?
It's a discretionary thing of, of the chair.
I agree.
It's gonna be the discretion of this chair right here, and if things get out of hand, somebody has to dabble down somebody who is out of, out of control.
But my, but my, I guess our point is, what's out of hand? And trust me, shouting out from the back...
Oh, as you've seen, I'm pretty liberal, but, you know.
That's the first time you ever accused of being liberal.
And the last, probably.
Don't clap, don't clap, don't get in trouble.
No clapping. But, no, seriously, there has to be a line, somebody has to make that decision.
I see, I, I and other people back here sit at a meeting once a month, and we've also been called stuff that I wouldn't want repeated.
Right.
It is what it is. It's what we bargained for.
For instance, if you were to come up here, in the tone of voice you're using right now and call me a hypocrite, there's no issue with that. You're entitled to your opinion.
I don't think so, and I would think...
That's, that's not an issue. That's not what we're looking to do here, right? Not at all.
I would think that, me personally, every time I come up here, I, I don't, I go back and watch the videos, I don't think I've ever crossed the line. And I agree with Mr. Sass, no, perfect, another perfect example. Mr. Sassoon here in September called me fat at this podium, no one did anything. Is that not personal? I wish it was defamatory. I wish I could say it was, and I've lost a few pounds.
Define, define the word, too, then you have to get through that part.
I mean, that's a personal attack, nothing was done to stop him.
That's an E.I.A. of the beholder, so...
All right, I'm still not voting for you, but I was a good charm. I, I, I think that's our point. I mean, I respect you, John, I truly do, I respect, if not anything, I respect your office. I think we've had many discussions where we both have shared the same sentiments. You're not a judge, you know, you're, you know, you're not a jury, and, and some of these are putting, and to be, to be fair to you, some of the things in this ordinance are putting you on the seat to make legal determinations, which I don't think is fair to you to handle. So, you know, wh- what's the harm of, of putting this aside for two weeks and rethinking some things?
Because the, the outcome needs to be the same, that's, and somebody has to, whether it's the president of the Board of Ed, it's the mayor, whoever's running a meeting, the committee person who's running a meeting, somebody has to control that meeting and be able to say, you know, you've crossed the line, and please stop. If you proceed with this type of behavior, you're gonna be asked to step down. If you don't step down, you're gonna be escorted out.
I totally agree with you. And putting a time limit on is totally, obviously perfectly acceptable, but some of these, again, I mean, I don't want to repeat myself, but the defamatory or personal profanity, I think we can all agree, you know, loud, what does that mean? I can't come up here and use a loud voice?
If it's disrupt, if it's disruptive.
But that's not what that says.
I'm not telling you, you can come up here and use, raise your voice, that's, that's not what this is about, it's more disruptive.
Yeah, but that's not what this says. You know, defamatory, I mean, I'm not gonna repeat myself, I've already said what I have, but just, I don't see the harm in putting this down for another two weeks, maybe look at it after the new year with the fresh set of eyes. And from some, and each of you are voting on this, and I'm not gonna go through every single thing that's been said, but, but some of you would be guilty of this very ordinance.
Absolutely. I agree with that. You can't come, you cannot come back up, correct? Sorry, Mr. Sasson. Anybody else like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only? Seeing none, motion closed to the public? Roll call?
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Mayor, I move to amend the ordinance. This ordinance should become Chapter 37 of the City Code and not Chapter 10. This motion is to remove all references to Chapter 10 of the City Code and replace them with Chapter 37 in Section 1 of the ordinance. I've consulted with the city attorney's office, and they have advised us that the proposed amendment is purely ministerial, and it does not alter the substance of the ordinance.
Okay, may I have a motion, please, to amend?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus? Now we need a motion to adopt.
Need a motion to adopt, please.
Offer.
Second, roll call?
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen and State of New Jersey that ordinance number 44-2014 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 454-14?
Is final adoption for ordinance number 45-2014, an ordinance amending Part 2 of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code, Chapter 170, Section 23, entitled "Turns at Intersections", and Section 64, entitled "Schedule 25: Prohibited Turns at Intersections." This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
I have a motion to open to the public, please.
Offer, second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Anybody would like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward. Give your name and address to the clerk, please.
Kathleen Salvo, 184 Hudson Street, Hackensack. Shouldn't it say trucks or over four tons? Isn't this the, the one for, so they don't knock down the traffic light?
Yes, it is.
So why, I don't, I don't have my glasses, but I don't see the, over four tons, I mean, everybody, nobody's gonna make a right? That's not what it's supposed to be.
No, it was designated for the trucks.
I know, but why don't I see that? Or am I not seeing it? A commercial, all right, commercial motor vehicles, but a commercial vehicle could also be a van. I thought it was limited to four...
No, there was a weight limit on the truck.
Yeah, I know, it was a four, it's supposed to be four tons.
It says 10 tons.
10 tons, mayor.
Where, where do we have that?
Look at 170-23, Section B.
I am.
That's where it first...
Oh, all right, it's in parentheses, I'm sorry.
Gross of weight with 10 tons.
All right, 10 tons. No, 10 tons, it's supposed to be four tons. Four tons? 10 tons, that's like a lot, 10 tons is, what, 2000, is it 210, 2... Yeah, no, it's supposed to be four tons.
10 tons is 20,000.
It's four tons, it's always been four tons, that's what we restrict our, our trucks in, on any of the zones, it's four tons.
Right.
It's 2,000, every, every ton is 2,000 pounds.
That's correct.
So, yeah, it's four, it's four tons would be the restriction, not 10, 10 tons is like an 18-wheeler with...
I thought it was for 18-wheelers.
But it's for four tons, four tons is a big truck. Four tons are the box trucks that are, are four tons. And that's the ones that knock down the, the traffic light twice. 10 tons is a very big truck.
Can this be amended after?
Can this be fixed?
I would say that's a substantive change, mayor, if you're changing it from 10 tons to four tons. So it would have to be reintroduced.
Be reintroduced. I was under the impression this was just tractor-trailers, large trucks.
No, a four-ton truck is a, is a box truck, it's a very, it's a big vehicle. Four-ton truck is like, all right, let me try to think who has a four-ton truck. It's a, it's a big truck, four tons is a, it's not an 18-wheeler, but it, it's a box truck that has, you know, it's high enough to hit that truck, that traffic light down.
Mr. Attorney, should we table this and...
Mayor, it's up to the council, the council may want, I, I don't know the derivation of how that got in there, I don't know whether traffic police or whoever...
I remember originally it was for tractor-trailers, Attorney, and Greenman, that's, that's why it was introduced by, it wasn't by you.
That's not how we negotiated it.
It was by somebody else.
It may be best to pass the 10-ton truck limitation so that you have it, and then review it with traffic and the police department and determine whether it has to be amended.
Let's get it started and then...
All right, yeah, because I've been waiting for this, thank you.
But I originally thought it was, remember hearing tractor-trailers?
Right, it was the larger trucks.
Right, even, Mrs. Salvo, even the drawings, the drawings we were given all had tractor-trailers, they showed the turning radius and everything on it.
I know, because you have to be in the left lane to negotiate the turn.
Correct.
But the four tons, you just understand it, and on our, on our side streets, when it says trucks, it says four tons, that's the...
Right, we will, we will check with traffic, and if there was a mistake or an issue, we'll definitely change it, thanks. Anybody else like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only? Seeing none? Motion closed to the public? Roll call?
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Motion to adopt?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen and State of New Jersey that ordinance number 45-2014 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 455-14?
This is a final adoption of ordinance number 46-2014, an ordinance amending Part 2 of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code, Chapter 109, entitled, entitled littering. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
May I have a motion, please, to open to the public?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Anybody would like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward, state your name and address to the clerk, please. Seeing none, motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Your motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen and State of New Jersey that ordinance number 46-2014 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 456-14?
This is an introduction of ordinance number 47-2014, an ordinance amending Part 2 of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code, entitled "General Legislation," to add Chapter 159, entitled "Towers and Wreckers."
May I have a motion, please?
Offer, second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance, being ordinance 47-2014, is introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on December 22, 2014, at 8 o'clock P.M., or as soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning this, concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be, and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law, with a notice of its introduction with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution four fifty-seven dash fourteen?
This is a resolution authorizing and directing the planning board to undertake an investigation to determine whether the delineated area of block two zero three point zero one lots two, three, and three point zero one, and block three hundred lots three point zero one and three point zero two, which is the record site, satisfies the criteria for designation as an area in need of redevelopment.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Resolution four fifty-eight dash fourteen?
Is a resolution authorizing proposed Bergen County Community Development Grants for two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen.
Motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Resolution four fifty-nine dash fourteen?
Is a resolution authorizing the tax refunds.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Resolution four sixty dash fourteen?
Is a resolution urging transportation trust fund reauthorization and increased funding for local transportation.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Resolution four sixty-one dash fourteen?
Is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for an additional tax appeal attorney.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Resolution four sixty-two dash fourteen?
Is a resolution for the authorization for the award of an emergency contract for replacement of fire department boiler.
May I have a motion, please?
Second.
Roll call?
I'm sorry, who seconded it? I did.
Mrs. Canestrino.
Okay. Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Resolution four sixty-three dash fourteen?
Is a resolution for transfers of the two thousand and fourteen budget appropriations.
Motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Resolution four sixty-four...
Mayor, you didn't say anything.
I'm sorry. Hi. I'm missing a sheet, so I was looking for it. I got distracted. Resolution four sixty-four dash fourteen?
This is a resolution setting parameters for public comment during City Council meetings.
Motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Resolution four sixty-five fourteen?
Is a resolution authorizing an inter-local agreement between the City of Hackensack and the County of Bergen for the reallocation of Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, otherwise known as JAG, program funds.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Resolution four sixty-six dash fourteen?
Is a resolution authorizing the payment of bills. The current fund is eight million, three hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and seventy-six cents. Grants is one thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars. Payroll was one million, five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars and forty-four cents. Capital is seven hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-seven cents. Total expenditures were eleven million, eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars and eighty-six cents, and inter-funds and transfers were ninety-five thousand, twenty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents.
May I have a motion to accept the bills, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call?
I'm sorry, who seconded? I did.
Mrs. Canestrino.
I'm sorry. I was rustling too many papers. Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
This time, anybody who'd like to come up to speak? Give your name and address to the clerk. You have five minutes.
Victor Sasson, two sixty-one Euclid Avenue. On the resolution concerning the record site, is that something that the record requested? Or is that something the city is moving to do on its own?
No, the record requested that.
And what, if the designation is made that it's an area of need, in need of redevelopment, what, what, what does that mean exactly?
That means his property would be exactly what it says deemed as an area in need of redevelopment, be more attractive to, like all the properties that we've done that with before, more attractive for development, where a developer could come in.
Well, I mean, they originally announced the plan to, to redevelop the site into apartments.
Mm-hmm.
So why is this move necessary?
The original buyers pulled out.
Pulled out.
The group pulled out. So now they're moving on their own, moving forward to have it deemed an area in need of redevelopment, therefore making it a more attractive piece of property.
Do any benefits accrue to the record from a designation such as this?
Does it benefit, benefits to everybody? The city, the record?
Any monetary benefits or any tax breaks or anything like that?
No tax breaks, no.
No.
No. It's potentially...
Public recognition that the site should be redeveloped, is that basically?
Absolutely. In order for them to redevelop their property, they, they need it deemed an area in need of redevelopment, has to go before the planning board. It comes back to the council, once the planning board approves it, then it goes down to Trenton to be approved.
So this has to happen before they can redevelop it?
Correct. Doesn't have to. But it's the norm for a site like that. It's...
Is the area, I mean, it's been five years since the record left Hackensack. Is the area considered an eyesore now?
Well, it would be considered, go ahead.
The redevelopment process is very complicated. This is the very first step. The council has to authorize the planning board to actually do the investigation.
Okay.
The investigation will be prepared, be prepared by a professional planner, and there will be public hearings that will be held at the planning board to make that determination. The planning board will have a finding. They will then submit that finding back to this council in which they will either accept or reject or modify the finding of the planning board. Then a plan will also be devised by the planning board and the council, which then will also have to be adopted. So this is a rather lengthy process, and you will have plenty of time to, to comment on the findings and on any plan which basically replaces the ordinance for this parcel. It'll be a special ordinance specifically for this grouping of parcels.
Thank you.
On some other matters, the proposed increase in the parking meters from seventy-five cents to, from twenty-five cents to seventy-five cents an hour, is, can someone get twenty cents' worth of time with a quarter? For example, when you want to go to the Johnson Library to return a book, do you have to pay seventy-five cents to...
Yeah, well, it's a set.
No, no, you can, if you use coins, excuse me, but if you use coins...
If you use coins, it's seventy-five.
If you use coins, you can.
No, you can get twenty minutes for a quarter.
So you can do that, okay.
Yes, you can.
I just wondered about that.
If you, if you, if you use your credit card for the dollar, that's...
It's more.
You, you have to, there's no way you can make it less.
And the season's over now, but I'm wondering if the council would consider banning leaf blowers on Saturday and Sunday, if that's possible? There's landscapers doing work in my neighborhood on Sundays, and I call the police, and it's really hard to, to regulate.
Well, we'd have to differentiate between commercial landscapers and homeowners.
Right.
Really can't tell a homeowner what you could, but it would be, it would be tough. We, we would consider possibly commercial, no, no commercial landscapers on a Sunday.
No commercial landscaping on Sunday.
We would discuss that, sure.
Also, turn lanes on, on Prospect and, I mean, on Passaic and Summit, any progress?
County. We have to go through the county. We've gone through it before. It's a county road.
Have we requested anything?
It have, in the past, yes. Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
You answered most of my questions about the record site, but two, two things. One, is that property now leased to the county for parking?
They are leasing property to the county.
And what's the lease term on that?
I think it was two years well before. I mean, there's a whole timeline that was agreed on, knowing that they were looking to develop that property with the county.
And another question is, how does the planning board go about investigating? I've never, I don't remember ever designating a board itself to go about investigating.
The city, the city, I'll let you answer that, sir.
Planning board is charged by the council to do an investigation under the guide of a, of a licensed professional planner. That planner will then go through a series of questions that are, I believe there's nine that are under the statute that have to be answered or have to be investigated. The finding of any one of those, the questions can, by basis of the analysis, the board can find it in need of redevelopment. There is public hearings to that. They look at a lot of different things, the existing master plan, the state plan, any environmental factors, vacancy, any blighted areas. They, they look at a whole host of questions that board, under the, under that plan, that the, the professional planner prepares, not dissimilar to a regular master plan, but very targeted on those properties.
So I, I...
They'll have, they'll have public hearings, and it'll be open for public cotton. If they, if they find that the area is in need of redevelopment under the statute, that's when they, they pass a resolution, then forward it on to the council for their consideration.
The, the question I have is, you're going to designate, the planner from the planning board is going to do that, actually, and who is the planner going to be? Is that DMR?
I believe it's DMR, it's our planner, it's our professional planner.
Is that DMR?
It would be probably Fran Reiner.
The, the lots and blocks are very specific in, in this resolution. However, in his findings, he may determine that other lots may be applicable as well, depending on the investigation.
Adjacent lots?
Possibly.
Okay. And what, do you have a timeframe for that?
Usually five to six-month process from start to finish.
And then hearings?
There'll be hearings with the planning board. They'll be, with, to determine the area in need of development, if it is. Then they will be, it'll be brought back here for the council's consideration, which I believe that is also noticed, it will be on the agenda. Then the plan itself, as it's developed, will be heard both at the planning board and at the council.
Thank you.
And then, of course, the site plan, after the, it's determined, then there actually has to go back for a site plan based on that plan before the planning board.
Thank you. I just want to enlighten Ms. Hurwitz on what they did when they were in power. The first part of Main Street, the right side only, that's like washing your right side of your face and not your left, they deemed it in need of redevelopment, at which time we spent a lot of money on doing a study, took, took pictures from above, was a Democratic headquarter involved. And the city council at that time wanted to just develop the right side and knock it all down and put up whatever. That started this big suit with Monahan and all the attorneys, because they failed to recognize that all the people that they were trying to go against were all attorneys. And it cost the city a lot, a lot of money, because it's still not developed, it's still a mess, and the attorneys are still, you know, mad at us. So we did do this, I'm surprised she forgot, because we did do this redevelopment with the last council, and it was the right side of the beginning of Main Street from the green to, I believe, it's called, it's called Bridge Street on one side, and it's, it's different names, but it was, it was that whole corner where, where Monahan is still not, is still mad at us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. Just give your name and address to the clerk, please. Thank you.
FJ Williams, New York City. I'd like some information, Mr. Mayor. I haven't been here in quite a while. And I keep reading on the YouTube or whatever it is. There's a lot of bickering. But I want to ask a question, meeting the new city manager here. I noticed a lot of people in Hackensack at night are doing buildings, re-renovating houses. And I'm curious, as what is the rule of thumb for that? Because then I, I file under the Oprah. Did they get a permit? Yes, they did get a permit. But then I see on the, when I see them doing it, they have a dumpster in the yard, and they're doing all these major things. And it says on one particular Oprah that I have, they're doing eleven hundred dollars. What they're doing, it can't be eleven hundred dollars. If you're replacing all the windows, vinyl windows, vinyl windows alone just cost you eleven hundred, and you tear out a kitchen, and you're doing the wiring? Because when I did the renovation of my house, once I tore out the kitchen, I had to do the whole house. Because the wiring, you add new wiring to old wiring, it won't take it. But I just looked at the Oprah today that I got. And I'm like, I, I just don't understand it. And when I called, they said, we'll send somebody out. But I just said, it just don't make sense. So when I go down to appeal my taxes, they said, we look, you're checking the houses, and it's a five-block area. I do. But a lot of times, these people list these houses that this is in it, that is in it, but the city is not collecting any taxes. So when, I can't get a reduction in my taxes, because the house is selling more. I don't understand that. How do they do it? I mean, is there a rule of thumb? If you change the windows in a bedroom in a house, it's supposed to be enlarged so a fireman can get in and out, or a policeman, if he had to rescue somebody with an air tank on. But what they're doing is just changing, putting windows in, so, and I know vinyl windows cost more than eleven hundred, especially when you're seven or eight, electrical, and then tearing out a kitchen in the old houses. There's latent damage behind them. I'm just curious, because I had to call the city, the building department several times, and I don't understand it. How we get away with it? We're not collecting, the city's not collecting the money due process of taxes. And you say it's eleven hundred dollars? I paid more than that, and I had to rewire my whole house, both of them. So I'm just curious, did you get somebody to check on it?
Well, I would, I would refer, you've obviously contacted the building department already, correct?
No, I just got it today, because I kept inquiring about it, they said a week to ten days, I gotta have it.
This itself is actually not a matter, I understand you're bringing it before the council. It's really a matter for the building department and code enforcement to see if there was work done improperly, without proper permits, and, and to see that the paperwork was filed properly and that, and that the work is done properly into code. And that's, that's where that needs to be addressed.
Right, but I had met the city manager, and I, they said they had a new city manager, so I wanted to call their attention to that, because I didn't understand it. But I just stopped coming because...
I mean, if you want to give the address of the resident, or the building you're talking about, I'm sure he'll be more than happy to contact the building department himself and have him look into it.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Next, please.
Earl Wardney, Lee Terrace, Hackensack. You know, last council meeting, I came up here and I quoted out some factual numbers. I didn't stay for the end to when you guys give your little retorts to what's said out here, because it doesn't make a difference anyway, because we can't respond back, because it's the end of the meeting. But I did go back online, and I, and I looked, and Mr. Mayor, you, you, you had a response back to me. You know, there's a saying that common sense is not always a common thing. And here's a little common sense for you. This is a city of almost forty-four thousand people. You look in this room, there's barely thirty, thirty-five people. So that means that a whole lot of people who might not like what's going on in this city, don't come down, or don't call you, or don't call the city manager to complain about it. They just make adjustments and move on, or they just move out, or, you know, they just do other things. But the last thing they do, because they don't think it'll get nowhere, just like, out of all the people that's in the city, what are y'all, maybe all got maybe a thousand or less votes out of forty-four thousand people? So that just shows you that a lot of people don't get involved like that. Doesn't mean that everything is copistetic, you know? That's just common sense, to, like I said, to live in a city this large and have less than thirty people at a council meeting. That shows a lot of people don't just really care about what goes on, or think that their voice or what they say won't matter, so they just move on and do other things. If you think that having a program one time at the city with two hundred and ninety-four kids in it, and in less than a year, you're down to one hundred and sixty is normal when you make a change, my man, you, like, like, that's, that's a real sad statement for you to retort to me at. To lose over a hundred and something kids out of one particular program? That, that's not normal. People, you know what? And, and, and I can speak, because I am an African-American, and I do know the other minorities, they're not coming here. A lot of them are scared to come here. They think that if they come here and say something, all of a sudden, they're going to get picked on or harassed by the city. get picked on or harassed by the city. So you know what they did? They're in Teaneck, they're in Inglewood, they're in Richfield Park, they just go other places. Because they think it does, and, and it shows, a lot of times what you say, it don't matter, because you're gonna do what you want to do anyway. That's the feeling, that, that's the real, real talk on the streets. I mean, like, like, you guys, you know, y'all, y'all, I'm sure you don't go out there, and you're not out there amongst the public, and if you are, a lot of them probably aren't gonna tell you the real, real deal. But the real deal, if, if you could be a fly on a wall in a lot of common places, to hear what really goes on, your eyes would be wide open, because you'd be like, wow, I didn't know that. Because you're just going by what you think you see and what you hear here. And common sense tells you that this ain't what's really going on in this city. But it's no stretch of the imagination. You know, it's sad, like, like, and the African-American community as a whole, how many of us are just gone? We left, we didn't, you know, like, they just leave, they're just, you know, Hackensack ain't it no more. And it's because they feel that their voice don't matter no matter what, anyway. And that's the real talk, that's real having, real, like, just real common sense about it. Like I said, go check your numbers, because numbers don't lie. And if you don't believe the numbers, or if you think those numbers are fine, I mean, like I said, I've, I, I, your, I voted for this ticket, Mr. Mayor, because of you, and I, I did have, like, some respect and, and rapport, whatever else, when I should see you and speak with you, and, and voted basically behind you. I had Mrs. Catastrino and, and stuff, you know, but, and I, I couldn't believe, when I looked on a video, your response back to what I said, and then you ask the city, people ain't calling City Hall, they're not calling you, they're just gonna go ahead and just do something else. If they don't like something, they'll just do, just like if you close off Central Avenue, and there's a detour sign, they'll just make a left and go around the corner. They're not gonna call up and, and be like, hey, why is the street? No, they're not coming here and doing that, they're just make other ways and do other things. And meanwhile, everything just suffers. It's suffering. And you think that's cool, man, that's sad. That is really sad. And if I'm here, because I'm really thinking about being some of my other friends, and just getting the hell up out of here, because this city is going backwards. It, it really is. And been here since sixty-six, my family, been tied to this city since sixty-six, and I'm ready to go. And I put my heart into the city. I told you up here, I bleed blue and gold. I was down to wreck, I've given up so much time and money for these kids and for this city, trying to give back. And yeah, you might say I'm coming from somebody who's bitter behind what happened to me, you damn right I'm bitter, because I was wrongfully removed from my position. Wrongfully moved, removed. And when I did beat the case, no one came back and offered me my position back. No one, no one said, hey, we were wrong, you know what, here, Mr. Ward, you know what you was doing to go, yeah, I heard that.
Mr. Ward, your five minutes is up.
But I hope you take a good look at what I said, that, you know what, what you see in here, here, ain't really what's going on here.
Your five minutes is up. Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, Alexis Palancas, Prospect.
How are you, ma'am?
I'm back. I have easy questions, I believe they're easy. First one is, the, are these meetings being televised? I had asked this a while ago, when you were looking into having them televised. I know you could go online.
You can go ahead and get them on YouTube right now.
That's all, though?
Right now, we are looking at another, between Aldebe and the city manager, on either getting them on Verizon or Cablevision.
All right, now, is there anything that we had, I had asked about, the police department having a place where you can drop off prescription drugs, outdated prescription drugs? Is that?
There's a program for that once a year, I believe, and I think we've already had it for this year, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, well, that takes us to the next thing, which is information. Some of, like Maywood, I get a lot of things from Maywood and Hasbrook Heights, I can't remember what the site is, what the thing is called, usually you get it on your smartphone, except I have a flip top, I, I will not, I'm a dinosaur. But they will send it to my Verizon, when I call the police department, they arrange that it, it comes on my email. However, very rarely, I just got one today, that was about how to prevent burglaries.
Okay.
But that's the only thing I've seen lately, so even when Central, Central was blocked off for forever, Maywood would tell you what's happening, but there was nothing from Hackensack, so could we possibly?
I will speak with Mr. Debb and make sure that the...
Yeah, more information from what's going on, and like, again, with this drug thing, pardon me. All right, that was easy. Oh, talking about the record site, are we still asking people who develop on the river to put the walkways?
Absolutely.
So that would be part of?
Agreement.
Part of the plan?
Yep.
Okay.
And in a record case, if I may add, they have to do something for the lane, as far as me getting into a nicer little park.
Perfect.
Because they do actually own that property, but they're not looking to, they're gonna keep them there, but...
I'm a little concerned with the amount of, the number of apartments that are being built everywhere, and just read an article that said that there's going to be sort of a glut now of apartments, and is there anything else that people are looking into, other than rental apartments, or even condos? Some sort of innovative use for these properties? Because we don't want to get, have a situation where we're stuck with all these empty apartments.
Right. Condo market's down, there's no, no developers are looking to build condos right now. The apartments are basically, everything's, right now, that's really being pushed, the larger projects are all within the rehabilitation zone for the, for resurgence of Main Street, to put people on Main Street, and to redevelop the city and rehabilitate that area, that's, that's the plan.
Okay, so...
But I wouldn't call it a glut, there's actually, you know, it could actually be a shortage, sorry?
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, you know, because it's the old CVS on every corner, and then things close down, because you have just too many...
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
If I could respond to that, we're very cognizant of that, and we, that's part of the investigation that the city will be going through, and some of the planning efforts that'll occur. So we are making sure that the right development is in the right place.
Good, okay. That's easy, that's good. The meter situation, well, no, no, first of all, this one does involve money. Months ago, we had discussed the possibility of repaving Prospect from Passaic to, I think it was Essex.
Correct.
And you were going to be...
Actually, it's Atlantic, but, that's all right, it's only a block.
You were looking into funding, getting funding for it, finding money? Did you find any money?
Always looking for finding money. The grant money we get for straits, believe it or not, are based on economics of the area. So unfortunately, the high-rise development is not going to get grant money for, for the straits, it's gonna be areas of town that are...
Right.
Where the income is lower, basically, it's based on income. But we're always looking for money, and we have some, some, some things, if you'd like to comment.
One of the things that I am doing with, with the CFO and, and all the department heads is we're developing a very detailed six-year capital plan. And one of the, the line items that I hope to infuse into that budget will be the issue of paving outside of, of just the CBDG grant areas, which would include the area that you're talking about. Whether that is the site or the area that's chosen to be done first will depend on the amount of money and the need that's determined by, by the professionals of the town and recommended to the council, and obviously, the council has the final say.
Okay, well, as I had said last time, it's...
Excuse me, Mrs. Plonk, your five minutes is up, I'm sorry.
I can't come back?
No, that's it, I'm sorry.
Oh, next time.
Next time.
Feel free to give me a call if you got other questions, I'll be happy to do what I can.
Yes.
She can speak with us afterwards.
Yes, and you can absolutely grab us afterwards, Mrs. Plonk, if you have any questions, thank you.
I just have a couple of quick questions, one of which Alexis referred to, I'm sorry, Daniel Corolla, but Mayor, my new address is 515 West Lookout. I, I moved around the corner from you.
Okay.
So you gotta be doing something right, but I guess what I'm most looking forward to is, is getting up and down burn with ease in the snow, because I hear it's, it's, you put a bit of polish on it during the snow, during the, during the snowy time. Be that all, as a mayor, the Nixal alert situation is, as Alexis kind of alluded to, it's a little strange, I mean, I got that alert about, oh, tips on burglaries, and it links me to the website, and that's fine, but it's just a, just the website, hackensack.org, it's not the article, and then looking for the article, I couldn't find it, not that I was concerned about burglaries or anything, but I think, you know, and I think Maywood overuses it, and anyone who gets them knows what I'm talking about, Maywood overuses them every time, I've said this before, every time they put out a traffic cone, Maywood tells you, oh, Central Ave is closed from this block to this block, and, oh, there's a power outage over here. We underuse them, so somewhere, there's a happy medium, I don't need to know everything that Maywood does every day, but I like to know when we close Central, you know, half of Central Ave, you know, I'd like to know what affects my morning commute, I like to know when there's a power outage, and, you know, emergency management sends them out, but I think there's a better way...
I agree.
To, to kind of revisit utilizing them in a, in a efficient manner. And then rubbish collection, I had an issue, I had to put some things out to the curb for, for rubbish, and I was, sat there for a few days, and I called sanitation and asked them why it had taken so long, because I thought I hadn't, I wanted to make sure I had my rubbish schedule right, correct, and I was told that there were some equipment issues, and there were a number of trucks out of service, and they were just kind of getting to it when they could, and they got to it a couple of days later, but I just kind of wanted to follow up with you, or perhaps Mr. Trost, through you. But what's the status of that? Has that been remedied? Was it a temporary thing? Is it more of a permanent situation with sanitation equipment?
Equipment issues, I'll let you address.
No one can deny, if they see the trucks, that they, they, you can't say they're not old, they are.
Right, right.
Obviously, they do break down, and they need to be fixed, and we're looking at a replacement plan, similar, that I talked about with the paving. There needs to be a long-range plan on how to deal with capital expenditures, and obviously, a three-hundred-thousand-dollar crash truck is, is something that would have to be bonded. They, we've had very few replacements over the years, because of, obviously, budget constraints, we still have those budget constraints. The city council will, will have to take the manager's recommendations bolstered by the staff, and particularly the CFO, and decide how they want to expend capital funds that are available. Obviously, sanitation will be on that list.
Okay, excellent. And then, just one last, one last quick point, Mayor, it was brought up about a potential look to ban leaf blowers on the weekends, and being a new homeowner, I'd certainly disagree with that, obviously, from a residential standpoint, because that's the only time I can do it, and I think the commercial folks, too.
Me, too.
The folks on my block who have commercial, and I'm sure there's folks on your block who have commercial as well, you know, they're there on Saturdays and Sundays, and it is what it is, I mean, it's, there's leaves on the yard, you've got to do what you've got to do. So I think a ban on that would just be foolish and extraneous. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Regina De Pasqua. I would just like to point out, the rules of order do not take effect until they are published, and the time limit does not take effect until the effective date of the rules of order. But the time limit, I hope will be enforced fairly, and when you tell someone, like, what happened last time, somebody went over the limit, and you let them, you let them, you let them do it. It has to be fair, okay? As far as, I do not want my comments to be construed as personal, defamatory, profane, abusive, threatening, loud, I am giving you that disclaimer. You may not like what I have to say, but I have the right to say it anyway. I am concerned about the integrity of certain members of this council, and the confidence that, or lack thereof, that I have in certain members, member, singular. There's a, a little backstory that a lot of people might not know, that this councilwoman encouraged my neighbors to come here and defame me publicly. This was done by a council member, okay, wasn't done by people out here, and I react to that, and I have not forgotten it, and I have not forgotten that I was called not qualified, and the only reason the council member stopped was because the city attorney, Mr. Morris, who was here at the time, told her she was violating attorney-client privilege. She has made other personal attacks on me publicly, here in this room, and nothing was done by any of you. Mr. Scrivo, I sent you an email, you never even gave me the courtesy of a response. When Ms. Greenman broke the law by filing a false report, that is misconduct, and her report, she says that, on July twenty-second and July twenty-eighth, I showed up at the green and began following her around and making gestures and taking pictures. She leaves out the whole part that there was a concert and hundreds of other people there, okay? This is a police report she wrote. That is a false report, and that is misconduct, and you never gave me the respect of a reply. And when she was saying what she was saying, and it was allowed to go on, that's what I mean, the tone was set by up there. This is the tone that has been set, it has been allowed to go on. What, Ms. Greenman has an office in her apartment? It's allowed, nothing? She, there, what are the consequences? What are the consequences? She called me a liar at a meeting. Nothing happened. This, this is why I get upset. If I'm being loud, I apologize, but I, she came to where I live personally. She went to the police and filed a false report about me, and I should just take it, and she can just sit up there, and I should respect her? That is not going to happen. It is never going to happen. And I, I am, have a problem with the fact that nobody stopped her until Mr. Morris said she was violating attorney-client privilege. She could say I was unqualified, she could say whatever she wanted to say about me. That's more wrong, more wrong than us saying stop, because she is to be held to a higher standard. I have no confidence in her, I asked for a vote of no confidence, that's been ignored, you have done nothing, nothing about the problem there, okay? And she will continue to do it. She, she makes snide comments, she does, makes faces, this cannot continue, that is where the respect starts. If, if I'm sitting in the back and she's looking at me, what? I, I, I can't, like, I can't do anything? But she, you don't see her, what she's doing, okay? This is where it starts. So you tell me, you've got your rules of order, tell me what is going to be different, and how will council members be held accountable when they disrespect the residents? And why was she never, and why you never did anything when I sent you the email about misconduct for a false report? Because I filed a police report, do I have to take action? Do I have to file a complaint? That she filed a false report about me? Seriously? She says I show up at places she's at. You have council meetings, the green for concerts, it's a lie of omission. What's going to be different?
What's going to be, do you want me to answer now? Because you have time, the five minutes is all...
I never use my five minutes.
The, the reason for these rules, Mrs. De Pasqua, is to get some civility, like I said before, that's gonna go both ways, that's gonna come from this podium, or from this dais down, not just from that podium going this way. There's gonna be a sense of decorum amongst the council members and the citizens, that's what we're looking to achieve. You're certainly welcome to come up here and give your displeasure, through the chair, that's the way we're gonna set it up, and we will deal with that appropriately. You will be able to ask the chair if you want to have direct contact, or ask somebody a question, that's gonna be up to them whether they want to answer or not. But in fairness, we, we're just trying to get some, a grasp on these meetings and get some civility in them.
And how are you going to control that that doesn't happen again to anybody else?
Any, any comments coming off this dais, which are not allowed from that podium, will also be dealt with.
I'll keep you to your word on that.
You'll get it, you got it.
Regina, don't forget my cell phone.
Yeah, I know, I only see your cell phone, yeah. Nobody else has their cell phone, no.
Richard Solik in Hackensack, New Jersey. I want to do this right, we got, we have these new rules, and whether they're in effect, let's, let's, we'll honor them in spirit. I have questions I'd like to direct to the city attorney, shall I do it through you, Mr. Mayor?
Um...
Or can I speak to him directly? You tell me.
You have any issue with that, sir?
I always prefer through the chair, but I'm not looking for form over substance, so if, Mayor, if you prefer that he...
They're strictly of a legal nature, that I'm not gonna be able to answer, I would say, yes, ask the attorney if it's something I could answer, I would say go through me.
I think they're, well, yeah, they're, okay. It was raised, I, I think by Stephen Gelber, that with respect to the rotino litigation against the city, you had an apparent conflict, because you worked with him as a city manager in your capacity as city attorney, you brought in the, I can't pronounce the man's name, from Morris Town to handle the matter, correct? And so you, I think, I believe you indicated you recognized the appearance of a, of a conflict, yes, or am I misreading that?
Mayor, if you wish I could respond, the city is being represented by Carmen, Dominic Carmoniola, Carmoniola and Retardi, each of the other named individual defendants are also represented by their own counsel.
Okay. Mr. Scrivo, you're still sitting in at the sessions, though, when he's briefing the council, I've noticed that. And in fact, when I, you know I review your bills regularly?
Yes.
Your firm is still involved in the rotino litigation. I, I don't know if it's a conflict or not, uh...
We've, we've looked at it, I've, I've run it by our firm's general counsel, who's the former dean of Seton Hall Law School, and he's confirmed that our participation in that case, to the extent that we participate in it, is within the, rules of professional conduct. Thanks for looking out.
I, I, you know, but... A couple of meetings ago, I asked you about a case that came, again, a wealth of information in those bills, Kathy, wealth of information. There was a matter in the Eastern District of New York, criminal matter, and I said, what are we involved? I, I think it was your brother who handled it, I know his background, can you shed any light on what that was, is or was about?
Yes, under US versus Giglio, which is a United States Supreme Court case, two Hackensack officers were asked to be witnesses in the US versus Richardson case, and so we had to interface with the US Attorney's Office in the Eastern District.
Thank you, okay. Did the communication go out to the local finance board regarding what I believe to be the conflict? I, I suggested you, you invoked the doctrine of necessity and revoked the agreement your firm was going to get out, you decided that we're gonna ask the local finance board for an opinion, did the...
The communication went out, and we were waiting a result.
Would it be possible to get a copy of it? I don't, I don't think I'd Oprah it, but I can't imagine it'd be...
Hey, we'll get a, I'll get a copy too, Rick.
I noticed in your October bill, your, your firm hit seventy thousand dollars, I want to come back in my next life as you, I want to say that. But putting that aside, I also noticed that a lot of it was Mike Monahan litigation, close to forty thousand, but then I noticed about twelve thousand for Danny Callahan, is that basically, that's the same case, I assume?
No, no, it's a brand-new case, so Danny Callahan, Mayor, through, through you.
He's a partner of Mike Monahan, I guess you guys...
Yes, so Danny Callahan filed an entirely new lawsuit, Danny...
Mike's not a plaintiff in that one?
He is a co-plaintiff, but the case is, the case challenges the planning board's approval of the one-fifty to one-seventy Main Street redevelopment and, and other site plan approvals.
That's why I pay my rent on time with them, I tell you. All right, and finally, if I may, you, when all that construction was going on by public, public service, I guess, and, and there was a comment, and...
Central.
About the, yeah, the paving of Central, is, is what, there now, the final product?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
Absolutely not.
Just asking, I'm happy to hear, thank you very much.
Yeah, we saw a lot of...
Have a good night, I behaved, I think you, I should get credit for that, right?
Yes, sir, appreciate it.
Can't clap, remember?
Can't clap for you, Rick, we're sorry.
I'm not.
Evening again, Mayor.
Evening.
Mayor, I referenced it before, I, I gotta take issue with your comments at the end of the last meeting, when, I guess it was Mr. Coley who asked you about the, putting it was Mr. Coley who asked you about the, uh, putting the city meetings on the public channel? TV?
Correct.
And I think it was Ms. Palancas who asked about it before, too. You indicated that the Board of Education somehow misled the city and was holding the city hostage. Let me preface my comments by saying that I, I understand the, no one here is stupid. The apparent political dynamic going on here. But I, you know, you and I and my fellow members on the board and, and, I, I can speak for Dave, Dave Leo and Kathy, I, not, not too much interaction with Councilwoman Greenman. But when, when it comes to the schools and the kids, we've been pretty, I think, you know, cooperative on both sides and in good faith. And I'm prefacing my comments for a reason. You know, the youth academy, which is every year where our city's youth, you know, we, we let you use Nellie K. Parker School. And no, 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 we don't ask for any, any fees. We're happy to do it. And I met with Director Martega for about two hours one night with Mrs. Solik and, and President McKenna. And we, we let you use one of our employees for the whole week. We didn't ask for any reimbursement for the salary. It was for the kids. And we had no problem doing that. Uh, I know for a fact that the city allows us to use the, the, the green space at the M&amp;M Building for the ECDC program kids. Same, you don't charge us for that, and I, I thank you for that, and I've acknowledged that in the past. And the, the second SRO agreement, you know, we all know the controversy what happened about a year ago, but the second SRO agreement, I thought went pretty smoothly. And our respective representatives got together. And I think hammered home, uh, in agreement, I, I personally think is, is a win-win, a home run for, for both of us. So when you use a term, I was a little taken aback by it when I was watching the video, misled and, and were taken at the city hostage, to be honest, I was a little startled by that. Not only, and again, I said it before, I'm sure, in the heat of the moment, we all wish we could choose our words better. Me, too, when I'm up here or, or speaking in public. But not only that, but I, I asked Mr. Solik about that. And I got emails. And more to my astonishment of the phrase, and I got a bunch of emails here where, "We're trying to help you." And, you know, Mr. Dib asked, for instance, on, on February, it looks like 20th, 2014, "I wanted to again explore what would be involved with getting council meetings broadcast on Channel 77," which is the TV channel. "In a prior, prior email, you indicated the school district would bill the city for costs associated with airing council meetings on the, on the channel. I would ask that the school district reconsider the policy." Mr. Solik responded, in relevant part, "The HEA contract," which, John, I know you are, you're, you're probably well-familiar with it as well as I am. "The HEA contract requires the board to compensate our employees for these tasks. I previously, on December 3rd, sent you the provisions of the CBA relevant to this issue. As best I can determine, since the city council meets twice per month, it will look to me like reimbursement would be at the rate of approximately $300 per month. I will forward your request to the district to waive reimbursement for the city for the Board of Education." You are well-familiar with CBAs. Back in May and June, place was packed, we're going to the police. You yourself and I, and I stood up and I supported you, saying there are only certain things a city can do when you have a CBA in place. We forwarded the city a copy of the, of the relevant revision of the CBA, which in pertinent part states, "Compensation for teachers performing home instruction and/or other additional employment throughout the year, including translating, other than instructional summer schools, shall be paid at the rate of $55 an hour, and that goes up throughout the duration of the, of the, of the term of the CBA." I want to make everyone in this room perfectly clear. We have no problem for you to use the, the box or, or whatever it is you, is needed to be done by our employees that we pay to put these meetings on, on television. We s, we said that in four or five different meetings. Our technical person who does it gave a step-by-step procedure on how to do it to let the city know what to do, when to do it, and our, our employee would even make himself available after hours for the city to do it. However, there's a CBA, we all know unions, and we're required to pay that employee for it. All we asked was for it to be compensated for that, much like you asked to be compensated for the SRO.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. Your five minutes is up, but I, I will, I will, I will respond to that later on gladly. Thank you. Next, please.
Evening again, Joe Berettro, Poplar Avenue. Two quick things, Mayor. One is I want to see if it's possible, I was talking to Regina earlier, the, on River Road from where the Pep Boys is, almost to where the Heritage Diner is, PSCNG a couple of months ago ripped the street up. The job they did in filling those holes is horrific. They're like in a Z pattern. So when you roll over them, it's almost like a speed bump. My concern is, if we get any little bit of ice or snow coming up, the plows hit it, they're going to be ripped up and now you're going to have gaping holes every number of feet, and you're not going to be able to see them. Today with the rain that we had, it was hard to see a lot of them and, you know, people were slowing up and hitting the brake more than normal because they're, they're pretty high.
Mm-hmm.
And my concern is it's for, it's for such a length, and it's been out there for a couple of months. Do you know when they're going to be coming out to, to fix this?
Can we talk to, uh, Mr. Hollenbeck?
It, uh, when you dig up a trench in a road, the last thing you want to do is do the final course right before winter because you're going to end up with worse problems. So unfortunately, we're going to have a temporary inconvenience on the roads that, that PSCNG has dug up. There are, Spatford County Road, and they do have policies on, on repaving, and that will be done in the springtime.
Could they have somebody check? I mean, my concern again is I just, as it's going to, and it's been wickedly just wet the last couple of weeks, but if it's snow or ice, and again, the plows come through, my concern is just that they're going to be huge holes. Can they come and look at the really horrible job that they did in filling it?
If, if there are problems, the best defense to that is for you to call my office and I'll get right on the horn to my, my folks that, that I know at PSCNG. And if it's an emergency situation, either the county or, or the, the city will have to, to do something, so.
Yeah, because I'm just trying to avoid that emergency part. That, that's what it is. The, the other thing was, um, as we try to move forward and rejuvenate our town on Main Street.
Mm-hmm.
It's pretty ironic that there are so many rules governing when it, when you're going to have a business or you have signage and it's an inch and it's this and that, but our town is inundated with, for rent, you know, all these owners and they're bigger than the size of the buildings that they're, oftentimes. I mean, it's like you're wa, you're driving through billboards.
Talking about the size of the signs, Joe.
Is there a limit to that?
There's a side ordinance, yes.
I mean, have you seen some of the-
Well, if you say anything in particular, just direct it right towards the city manager and we'll take care of it.
I just noticed the other day, at the light-
There's a lot, a lot of signs that are-
Especially with the light now for the holidays.
Mm-hmm.
They just stood out, and I said, "This looks like the town is up for, for sale almost, for rent." And it's not, it's not a good look for us when we're trying to beautify it and get things moving in the right direction, and you have everywhere you turn, literally even the side streets have these huge signs.
The Main Street Alliance is looking at putting on vacant stores, a, uh, kind of what we envision Hackensack looking like with the redevelopment in the windows. It's like a, like a decal type of thing. And to eliminate that, one of those issues.
You know what I mean? It cheapens it. It looks like-
I agree.
You know, and it's everywhere.
Right. Sometimes, sometimes if it's within the or, side ordinance, you can't even do anything about it.
Okay, that's, and that's what I wanted-
It's outside the side ordinance, we can deal with it.
That's what I wanted to ask, if there was something like that, because I know when you do, when we do have open a business, you have to meet the requirements for even the, the wording on the window or on the, on the awning. And it seems to me that these signs just keep getting progressively bigger.
Right.
And they're put everywhere that there's an open piece of land.
Yeah, businesses will stretch the limits. Bigger is better. More people see my sign if it's bigger.
Right, and, and I want to see if we have any kind of control over that because-
We do.
We want to, we're going in, in a direction and you don't want that to impede anybody saying, "Well, this looks like it's not worth investing in here."
We can have a code official travel and look just for that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Have a good evening and have a Merry Christmas.
You, too. Happy holiday. Next, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Mayor Counsel. I have a question for you about, uh, street cleaning. Is there a, um, a limitation that street cleaning is not done because of the weather, obviously for when it snows, but, or leaves or, or something? Do you know, uh, if there's a limitation on-
Not that I'm aware of. I know there's been some changes sometimes with the, with the street cleaner is also used as a combination to gather the leaves and push them into larger piles, but at the same time, he is supposed to be cleaning the street from what I understand.
The reason why I ask is, uh, the last, in, I, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't address, I'm Paul in Calcaterra from Broadway.
Okay.
Uh, the last three weeks, there have been no street cleaning on, on my block. And the other day, I, I know there was across the street, not on the, uh, the, let me see, that's the southern side. Uh, on the southern side, there were no leaves, on the northern side, which was not that day.
Right.
Wasn't done. I said, "Well, maybe it has something to do with leaves or something." But for three weeks in a row, there's been no street cleaning.
No street cleaning.
And I'm saying, maybe, maybe it has to do with, Monday was a day that was a little icy?
Well, I know street cleaning does end at a certain time of the year in the winter. They don't think they do it in the dead of winter, but-
I can check into that. I can tell you that with the, we, we've had a rather interesting stretch of weather these last, right before Thanksgiving, I think everything kind of changed on us. The main focus of sanitation, DPW, is obviously keeping our safe, our streets safe, but it, it really is, is focusing on trying to get the leaves up. Uh, and with the, the dampness, the rain, just makes it that much more difficult. I will check on the street, street sweeping because the mode of operation should be, is that the leaves are picked up.
Yes.
In a, in a scheduled manner, and the street sweeper should follow.
Mm.
Um, apparently that has not happened based on your observations, and I will check into that.
Well, like I said, you know, on the, on the other side, which was not the day the, the sweeper was going to be, there was, you know, it was fine, uh, it was, it was bad. But on ours, on the, the southern side, it was good. And I'm saying, "Well, maybe, maybe they don't want to do it now. Maybe it's because of the frost or something." But I would think, you know, for the last three weeks, and I make sure that the cars are, are not there, I ask my neighbors, you know-
Usually, there's always at least one or two street cleaners after the leaves are picked up, always.
Okay, well, maybe, maybe the ups and downs of the weather or something, okay. The other thing I want to say is I had a meeting with, uh, Mr. Trost, uh, and regarding my neighbor next door, the Cultural Arts Center, and he, he was very, uh, he was very, uh, helpful in taking a look in, at my situation, and I, I look forward to, you know, having some peace and quiet there and, or having some, some, um, uh, what's, what should I say? Some, um, s, s, some understanding. And the last thing I want to say is, we always have, we always have the saying that no news is good news, right? How often do people come up here and say, "Hey, you guys did a great job," or "I'm really so happy about it"? How often do they come up to the podium and say that?
Not enough.
Not, okay. Well, um, I, I always think that, you know, good things should be mentioned because no news is good news. I, I gotta say, I went to the, uh, the lighting of the Christmas tree. That tree is really nice.
Yeah, they did a great job.
You, you guys did a great job, whoever designed it.
It was our parks and DPW.
Who did it, the DPW?
DPW and Parks Department.
Okay. Well, I got to tell you, coming up, you know, Main Street and seeing that, I said, "Wow, this really-"
Whole park looks great.
This really looks terrific. So I just want, I want to leave on a positive note.
Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
You know, you could go back to my grandmother's time, back in the early, or late 1800s when she was born, and she used to tell me stories growing up where part of her job was actually to go sweep out the gutter in front of her house. And then she had to go do her ants on top of that. The old way.
Yeah. Your taxes-
I'm not, I'm not saying that you're doing that.
Your taxes were about $10 a year then.
That's correct.
All right. Motion to close to the public, please.
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Tagley.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Castellano.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Hey, Mr. Tagley, anything?
Thank you for coming. Good night.
Ms. Castellano.
Yes, I'd like to use my time tonight to talk a little bit about the discussion that we had regarding the rules of decorum. Um, I think, Joe Berettro, I think you really hit the nail on the head of our intent. And, and that intent is to return, to turn these meetings into a more civil discourse, to actually enable civil discussion and productive discussion, because I think that's what these meetings are all about. I think we've proven that we do listen to you. I think there's been a number of times when we have postponed a vote or pulled an ordinance or pulled a resolution because you guys brought up valuable information. You know, this is a big city and, and we have lots of things that, that come before us. And, you know, there's five of us, and we do, we try to do as much research as we can and, you know, overturn as many rocks as we can, but we're not perfect. We're not going to find everything. And that's why some of you are here. And I know personally, I appreciate that. I appreciate you coming to us with that information, and if we need to look into it, we will. And we've proven to you that we do that. So please, continue to do that. And in no way is there any attempt by these rules of decorum to discourage anything that you wish to bring here. All we're asking is that you talk to us with respect and we talk to you with respect. We looked at a lot of other towns, and we looked at their rules of decorum, and, and we feel ours is, is certainly very similar to theirs. And we also looked at our own Board of Education's rules of decorum. Actually, I'm sad to hear that you're removing the word abusive. I don't think anyone is entitled to be treated in an abusive fashion. And I think, you know, especially as a school, I, I would actually ask you to reconsider doing that. I mean, we know now, especially in the schools, there's huge anti-bullying campaigns. And let me tell you, some of the discourse that was going on at some of these meetings really was approximating bullying, in, in my opinion. And I think that no one, not the public, and you know Regina, I hear you, not the public and not us, no one should be treated in that fashion. And that's what these rules of decorum are all about. And we, we promise that we're here to be open and transparent and to listen to you, and we will. Let's work together. We have lots of problems still in the town to, to, to solve and lots of things that need to be fixed, and we want to hear about that. And no, we're not going to say we don't want to hear negative comments or we don't want to hear criticism. I mean, yes, we do want to hear what you think. You're not going to agree with us all the time. Just, all we're asking is, let's do it in a civil manner, let's be respectful of one another, let's set good examples, let's set good examples for our children who sometimes attend these meetings. So, again, I'm sorry that some of you were still unhappy and asked us to postpone it, but I think we made the right decision in moving forward with it. I think it's a good set of rules, and I think we're going to have nice, civil, productive meetings in the future, and I look forward to that. Have a good night.
Thank you. Mr. Sims?
Thank you for coming out. We appreciate your feedback and suggestions. These things help us to continue making the city better. On a brighter note, this Saturday, at the Recreation Center, we are having a children's holiday party from 10 to noon. holiday party from 10:00 to noon. And next Friday, December 19th, is opening day for rec basketball. We're going to have an opening day ceremony, which is going to start at 6:00 p.m. We're looking forward to seeing all of you at this event.
Happy God. It's their 19th.
I hope you have a blessed Thanksgiving. And one thing I want to change, is Mr. Warden still out there? The numbers, I checked with Pat Rigerio as of today, are 234 kids registered compared to last year, 266. So we're not that far off. Good night. Thank you.
Ms. Greenman?
I'm glad to see that we had adopted the rules of order. I think they were long overdue, and thank you, Mrs. Savo, for noticing it. I think they should have been implemented as soon as we sat down at this podium. I also would like to thank Mr. Baretto for noticing how the rule, how unequally this, the timing and the rules were applied prior to this most recent adoption, and I think the personal attacks are unseemly and should not be allowed to go on without a restraint. I wanted to wish everyone who's celebrating a happy Hanukkah, and on our next meeting, I'm going to wish everyone Merry Christmas. That's about it. Drive carefully and stay well. Thank you.
Thank you. Casey, first I want to offer an apology because I certainly didn't mean it in that context. And to be honest with you, the papers that you brought up, I've never seen. And I was aware that Mr. Dibb did have some discussions, but I wasn't aware of exactly what took place in all those discussions. My reference goes back to the last council when we were, if you remember, they were always looking to, looking into televising meetings when that happened, and there was some comments that were made about paying the schools to do it. And at the time, I just took it as, I found that strange because I, from my knowledge, I thought it was just a matter of plugging into the box, nothing to do with labor or contracts or anything like that. And that's where my comment came from, and I apologize for it because it's a lack of information on my part, and I didn't have all my information. To address Mr. Warden, again, he's not here, but I know he'll be watching out there on TV, landlady. His, my comments to him, and I stick to it, nobody from, in this city, from basketball has called and complained. Nobody. I get complaints from football, I get complaints from baseball, I get complaints from wrestling, every sport but basketball. So how would I know that there's a mass exodus into all these towns like he's saying? Now, you're talking, right now, it's at about 30 kids, right? Baseball, for instance, is half of what it was. It's just, it's just the culture, it's the nature. Things go up and down. Wrestling is bursting at the seams. So things change. I certainly am not going to create a panic over one man's comments that we've driven the whole basketball program out of town, because I disagree with that, and the numbers prove that it's not true. Where else were we? The rules of decorum, again, I don't have to say much because I think Mrs. Canestrino pretty much hit the nail on the head. Our intent is not to quash her opinions or to stifle free speech. That's the last thing I want to do. It's just to have it presented both ways in a more civil manner. Where else were we? Mr. Warden also said he bleeds blue and gold. There's a lot of us bleed blue and gold in here, right? We will address Mr. Croll, is he still here? Yes, we definitely will address.[1741.36]